I have here and to set my hand and seal for the city of Raton this 10th day of May 2022.[6.12][6.12][applause] Thank you.[14.62][14.62][laughter] Thank you, Mayor.
It's all right.
That says something.
Yeah, it don't work either.
Thanks. All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys.[40.11][40.11][applause] And we have one more proclamation EMS week. Commissioner Chavez.
Emergency Medical Service Week, May 15th through May 21st, 2022. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educated administrators, and others. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service team, whether career or volunteer, engage with thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical service providers. Now therefore be resolved that James Neal Segada, Mayor, in the city of Raton, does hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2022 as national emergency medical services in the city of Raton. And invite citizens and civic organizations to extend a heartfelt thank, a heartfelt thank you, and to recognize the contributions which Raton Emergency Medical Services make every day for our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Therefore, he has therefore set his hand and seal to this city of Raton be affixed this day. Meet James Neal Segada.
You got one guy there.[154.13][154.13][applause]
Thank you, sir. You bet you. I'm gonna pitch you over here.
Thank you, Agent. Thank you.[162.16][162.16][applause] All right. At this time, we will take items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so at this time. See, nobody. We will move on. Item 6A, deliberate and act on approval of April 26, 2022 regular meeting minutes and April 30, 2022 budget workshop minutes. You've all had a chance to review those, I hope.
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, public hearing deliberate and act on proclamation prohibiting and limiting the sale and use of fireworks, May 2022. Mr. Berry, do you want me to read this, or you just want to cover the highlights?
I'll cover the highlights, Mayor, and I will begin by telling you that we do have an ordinance in place. It's been in place for an extended period of time, and largely it covers what we're covering in the proclamation. However, in statute, and I have provided you a copy of the statute, it does make a provision for conditions of extreme or severe drought and restricting sales and use of fireworks. And so we're referencing back to, number one, we're having a bad fire year or something that we talked about early in the year, April, and now in May. The current fire gaffs Canyon, Hermits Peak, over $200,000, 200,000 acres have burned and many houses. Last I heard, somewhere in the vicinity of 170 houses. So, and it's only early May. And so we're expecting a pretty tough summer from the wildfire risk perspective. We really haven't got into the season where we have that dry lightning that's still coming up. Not a lot of precipitation forecast. We've got low humidities and heavy wind, and so a very serious concern. And of course, the governor had asked local government to prohibit all fireworks. Now, we did do a legal review of this with counsel from self-insurers fund, from municipal league, and it's pretty well covered here in the section of the statute that I provided for you, 60 dash 2C dash 8.1. And so it gives you the terms that the city commission can consider. And I have taken that language, and I have put it into the proclamation, and the statute dictates that we do this by proclamation. Now, I would tell you that a lot of these fireworks that are missile-type fireworks, anything that goes in the air, really are currently covered by ordinance. So we have a little duplication there, but one thing we want to do is caution the public on the extreme risk and those businesses that are planning to build an inventory of fireworks. And you want to be very careful about the type that you can sell and the type that you can use. And so this proclamation does not completely outlaw fireworks, and I would answer the question that you might have. We are planning for the city Fourth of July fireworks show. And we're doing that because we have a lot of people that are specially trained on duty during that during that event. It's the it's the individual fireworks that we don't know about, that we can't plan for, we can't make a contingency for, we can't prepare for. So we do have some provisions on what is prohibited. And Mayor, if I could, I'll go down the list really quick, just so we have discussed that. But the proclamation or the ordinance does not outlaw all fireworks. And from our finding, we're not able to do that. Just what's covered under the statute that you see. And so what you would be declaring in your consideration of this proclamation is that any fireworks that are not on this list, and I'm going to read the list to you.
Now, therefore.
Yeah, those would be restricted to areas that are paved or barren. In other words, there's not a fuel source in close proximity that could create a fire. And those people using those have a readily available source of water for use by the homeowner or the general public. So here's the list of things that you could consider. It can't be one of these. Missile-type rockets, helicopters, aerial spinners, stick-type rockets, and ground audible devices. They shall be banned within the Raton municipal area. So in addition to what we see in the ordinance, those types are banned. And basically, that's anything that goes in the air. If you have something that stays on the ground or handheld sparkler, if you meet these conditions, that would be considered legal, but not ground audibles. Okay? Number two, the use of all fireworks within wildlands in the jurisdiction of the city of Raton shall be banned. In past years, we've seen fireworks in the air on the old pass, on Goat Hill, in some of the areas where we have a lot of vegetation. That would not be legal under this proclamation and under our ordinance. The sale and use of display fireworks within the jurisdiction of the city of Raton shall be banned. That's what you're considering here. I have provided you a map that there is some provision for your consideration of the extent of the drought. And what I found from this drought monitor map, and this is a coalition of different federal agencies that put this together, is that Colfax County is over 98% in severe or extreme drought, over 98%. So where you see the black mark there, that's Colfax County, and it's pretty ugly. So I bring this to the commission for your consideration. You do have a recommendation from the fire chief. He has consulted with state forestry and other officials, and of course, the governor has made her wishes known.
All right. Thank you. One quick question on the ground audible devices, Mr. Berry. I'm assuming that would include firecrackers?
That's correct, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I'm just curious of our enforcement plan. I know we've had complaints in the past about that, you know, we've had a ban maybe not this severe because of the drought and stuff. So what is our plan?
That's a great point, Commissioner. We can take this action, we will have to enforce it as well. I will talk to the chief. I think it's important that we have fairly robust enforcement, both on the side of the sale and during the usage period. Now, I would point out that the proclamation is limited to a 30-day time period. We wanted to bring it to you now so that businesses that may be thinking about ordering inventory know that this is in place. But we probably would have to do this one more time before the Fourth of July. And the 30-day period is in place because weather conditions can change. We don't see that in the 30-day forecast, but it is a possibility.
Right. And I would say, right after the track fire, we did this same proclamation. And I want to say, I don't recall, I think the citizens upheld that fairly well, if I remember correctly. We didn't have a lot of illegal stuff going on right after the track fire. That was just, you know, weeks after, a couple of weeks after the track fire ended. So I think the citizens get it. I think they see the what's happening, the devastation just south. Hopefully, they would use better judgment at this time.
Absolutely. And the people who've talked to me all are asking us already, are banning, we need to ban, do you take care of this? I think we're all incredibly concerned.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions?
I agree with it.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
A motion and a second to adopt the proclamation prohibiting and limiting sale and use of fireworks, May 2022. Any further questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item C, deliberate and act on lodgers tax funding recommendations. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, commission, in your packet, you have a number of lodgers tax recommendations. And you can handle these how you want to proceed. You can you can rule on them one at a time, or you can batch them up, I think, however you want to do it. I'll start out the top of the list, and then you all can decide how you want to go from there. The first one at the top of the list is a request for lodger's tax from KRTN Enchanted Air Incorporated. The purpose is radio advertising, promoting Raton events and organizations to the traveling public, guests, regional residents outside of Raton. And the request, all in, is $7,133.79. You do have some backup information in your packet, but I'll hold up there and try to answer any questions that you have, or Desiree, I think, Desiree, you were at the meeting, you might have a little information for us.
Yes, sir, I was.
And we do have a number of other ones, and I'll let you decide how you want to approach this.
I think we can adopt them all at once, or but have discussion on individuals as we go. So is there any questions on the enchanted air?
I think it's good.
Okay. Mr. Berry, moving on.
The next I have on my list is from the Raton Main Street Organization. Raton Main Street is present here tonight for the purpose of organizing the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally. That's planned to be held between July 2nd and July 4th. Is that correct? So they have done that for the past eight years. And of course, that's one of the really popular and iconic events for Raton. Let me thumb through a little more here, Mayor. And I see that the total project and promotion cost is listed at $19,247.74. You do have in your packet a breakdown of itemized costs. And I'll let you look that over, and if you have any questions, we have a number of people here to try to answer those.
Brenda or Chris, any comments?
We're looking forward to another successful rally. So we're getting hired in, we're getting sponsors in, and continue to organize it. And we hope you approve the funding.
Sure. So you guys are, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, it looks like they're just requesting just under $7,000.
Right.
And they have provided $12,289. And we absolutely appreciate you all working so hard and raise funds on that. It's just a wonderful event. Thank you.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. So very good. No, good.
Well, I stand corrected then. Good catch, Commissioner. I was wrong on my total amount, the request amount, so.
Yeah, that's all right. All right. Next item there, Mr. Berry.
I've just been handed some guidance here.[966.63][966.63][laughing] Next on the stack, let me make sure I'm looking at the correct thing. The lodger's tax board has recommended the commission that $1,500 be allocated to the Center for Community Innovation. This is for the Raton Visitors Guide Distribution. It would come from the print advertisement line item. So you do have the application and some information in your packet regarding this request, $1,500.
All righty. Any questions? Okay, next up, we have something for the Supercross, it looks like.
The lodger's tax board is recommending to the Raton City Commission that $1,802 be awarded to the Center for Community Innovation. This would cover the cost of emergency medical technicians standing by, being on duty for the Raton Supercross, and that would be allocated to the contingency fund line item.
All right. And the final one for consideration looks like advertisement for promotional merchandise.
You do have a recommendation from lodger's tax board to allocate $5,496.50 to the Center for Community Innovation for advertisement and promotional merchandise from the contingency fund line item.
And it looks like in their breakdown, this is for the Supercross event as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions? Do you entertain a motion to adopt or to approve all the recommendations, or we can pull something for further discussion?
I make a motion to approve all the ones presented.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve all recommendations. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Deliberate and act on lodger's tax non-promo fund requests. This would be the Raton Museum and Raton Arts and Humanities. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, normally Kathy McQuary, who is the president of the Raton Museum Organization, would be here to answer your questions and make a presentation. She did prior to the meeting contact me and say that something had come up, and she would not be able to make it. I said we would talk about the proposal that they have provided for you that's in your packet, and then if you do have any questions or comments, or you want to follow up, we can certainly do that. We'll decide what you want to do. In short, this is something that has been funded in past years, and the board has requested funding in the amount of $30,000 for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. And so I think, I believe that's at the same amount that we have awarded in past years to continue the operation of the museum. And I'll try to answer any questions that you have, but we can pass this along. If you want to take more time, and you have questions, I can answer.
That looks good, and I appreciate that they included some very specific things that they do to satisfy cultural currents and tourism. Because I don't know if I've seen that before, maybe I missed it, but I thought that was good to include this here.
Yeah, I think it's a valuable service, so I will approve lodger's tax non-promotion fund request for the Raton Museum.
Motion and a second to approve the request for the Raton Museum of $30,000. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Raton Arts and Humanities, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, you also have a proposal from Raton Arts and Humanities Council in your packet. It starts off by stating that the Raton Arts and Humanities Council was founded in 1988 and designated the Raton Arts Council in 1991. The council is a not-for-profit corporation that represents the arts and humanities in Raton and surrounding communities. They do operate out of the Old Pass Art Gallery, the Wells Fargo Building that's close to and close proximity to the Railroad Depot. We do have Brenda Ferry present from the Board of Raton Arts and Humanities Council. I will read their request for you. They do request consideration of $1,500 per month for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, for a total of $18,000 from the non-promotional lodger's tax fund. That would help supplement the daily operational expense of the gallery that cannot be covered by grant funding. It will help in keeping the doors open on that facility.
All righty. Thank you. Any questions for Scott or Brenda?
I make a motion to approve the Raton Arts and Humanities request for $18,000.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the request of $18,000 for Raton Arts and Humanities. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on event form for Main Street, Fourth of July event on First Street. Mr. Berry.
Main Street is very busy.
Yes, they are.
They've got a lot going.
They usually are.
Yep. This is, we are planning right now on conducting the city fireworks show, as we previously talked about. We are planning on balloon rally and having our regular events, and along with that would be the festival and parade. So the parade route is on First Street, as we've done in past years. You do see in your packet that the event has been reviewed by city staff. They have signed off on that, and that's the recommendation to the commission for approval of the event. Again, a popular and important event for the community.
All righty. Any questions for Mr. Berry or the gals?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the event form for Main Street, Fourth of July event on First Street.
A motion and a second to approve the event form for the Fourth of July event. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on biennial MOU between the city of Raton and lo and behold, Raton Main Street.[1433.13][1433.13][laughing] Wow, they are busy, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, you do have the biennial memorandum of understanding, the MOU. That's an agreement between the city and Raton Main Street. And luckily, they put the dates on here, so I don't have to think about the meaning of biennial. It would run from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th of 2024. Now, this has to do with how Raton Main Street operates under the New Mexico Main Street umbrella. And the comments that I would make are that this partnership of the city of Raton, Raton Main Street and New Mexico Main Street, has resulted in really advancing our goal of downtown revitalization, specifically in the historic railroad district of First Street. The Great Blocks Project has been completed in several phases, several large phases. First Great Blocks Project in New Mexico to be completed. We recently were awarded capital outlay funds from New Mexico Main Street for our goal of renovating the Railroad Depot. We'll start on that project next. I anticipate that will take several phases as well, but we did get a nice chunk of funding for that first phase. But I would call on the Main Street folks to come forward and tell us how this works with New Mexico Main Street, their program, Raton Main Street, and what the request is. There is a funding request in the agreement for the commission to consider. And Christine, if you would kind of give us the highlights.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Town Commissioners. I am Christine Valentini, President of Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District. I would also like to introduce our Board of Directors, who are Devon Varden, Vice President, Melissa Medina, Secretary, Serena Lannan, Treasurer, Linda Hadley, Lynette Simpson, Rebecca Secalares, and Von Via Pondo. And we all, of course, support our hardworking executive director, Brenda Ferry. Our mission, our mission is, we are committed members of the community dedicated to improving the quality of life in Raton by revitalizing our downtown area. We want to foster business prosperity and offer new economic opportunities. We seek to have a community where all generations can have a sense of pride in Raton, and all cultures feel respect for their heritage. Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District, having met all accreditation requirements for 2021, 2020, and 2021, has been designated as a Main Street America and New Mexico Main Street accredited program for the calendar year of 2022. This is important for our community because of the assistance we receive. You have in your packets the 2020 and 2021 annual service delivery reports. For our listening audience, I'd like to report that in 2020, yes, even in the worst year of COVID, we received a market value of services in the amount of $18,766, the largest of that amount being the $7,000 Resiliency Alliance Grant, which helped us with the Business Sustainability and Recovery Micro Grant Program. For this program, we also raised an additional $10,000, and these funds were used to help businesses stay in business as they applied for grants needed through that year. In the year of 2020, as many of you already know, we also assisted businesses to stay in business with, through the Raton Cash Mobs. We assisted businesses to stay in business, which brought in revenue of $50,000 to assist 34 businesses from April 2020 to April of 2021. The 2021 annual service delivery report's market value was $284,625. Of that, of course, the largest amount there is the $270,900 Capital Outlay Grant for Phase One of the Historic Train Depot Preservation Project. These reports do not include the other grants and funds raised by Raton Main Street, such as the $50,000 T-Mobile Grant, which Brenda applied for, as you know, to finally get our wayfinding signage up. And also funds raised for our mule projects, which we will continue with. We also have in your packets other statistics reported to New Mexico Main Street and Main Street America, and the many accomplishments in which we partnered with other organizations. Also enclosed in your packet is our project list for 2022. We also have in your packets other statistics reported to New Mexico Main Street and Main Street America, and the many accomplishments in which we partnered with other organizations. Also enclosed in your packet is our project list for 2022. We will continue with our events as listed and with all projects as listed throughout the year, and moving forward, of course, always moving forward. Our organizational vision is, Raton is small-town America at its finest. It is a comfortable place to live where residents and visitors can escape the hustle and bustle of a more hectic lifestyle, to be greeted by heartfelt smiles and friendly hellos while strolling downtown. A place where neighbors truly care for each other and offer hospitality to visitors without hesitation. Raton has a deep sense of shared values and community pride, a deep appreciation of its historical and cultural heritage, and also provides the best of modern conveniences. Life in Raton makes you want to be part of the thriving community where businesses prosper and economic opportunities abound. We ask for your continued support and approval of the Biennial Memorandum of Understanding between New Mexico Main Street Program, City of Raton, and Raton Main Street and Historic Downtown Arts and Culture District. Our Executive Director is essential to our Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District and essential for Raton. We also ask for your support and approval of additional funding via the financial resolution. We are requesting $45,000 for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, with another increase in the following year to $50,000. This request is to help our organization reach its goal of a minimum operating budget as set for by Main Street America accredited programs. For communities of our size, that is $60,000. We believe this additional financial request will help with increased costs of health insurance for our Executive Director, which these costs continue to skyrocket, and with increasing costs of operating a program, which include travel for conferences, training, of course, office supplies, you name it, equipment updates, upgrades. So that's the reason for the request and hoping to split that up for over the next, you know, couple of years. We have not had a request for an increase in the past four years. We are committed, and we will continue to abide by the eligibility, participation, and reporting requirements as set forth. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Christine? Okay, this is item F. This is the MOU that we're considering right now.
And this doesn't have the funding element of taxes. I mean, I think we all, I certainly appreciate everything Raton Main Street does and all the money that's been brought to the community, the revitalization of projects. I just can't say enough of how much we appreciate you guys and all you do.
Thank you.
This speaks for yourself.
We're happy to do it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'd entertain a motion if not.
I'll make a motion to adopt the biennial MOU between the City of Raton and Raton Main Street.
One second.
A motion and a second to adopt the biennial MOU between Raton and Raton Main Street. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-25 approving financial support to Raton Main Street and supporting the public-private economic development Main Street project. Chris kind of touched on this with the request, but if you flip it on to two, it says you're only asking for $40,000 in the resolution.
I believe Michael Ann had indicated to me that she was going to leave the resolution as is until you decided to make the decision to change it.
Alright.
If you decided on approving the $45,000 for this next fiscal year, and then adding on the additional language of raising it to $50,000 in the following fiscal year. The memorandum covers the two years, so we're just kind of hoping that the resolution will follow the year of the memorandum, fiscal years of the memorandum.
Okay, any comments, questions?
I would definitely support the increase myself. I feel like our lodger tax is healthy and that Main Street brings a lot of funding into our community. So I would be comfortable with the $45, $50,000.
Hold on a second.
I don't know if that was a motion, but.
Sounded like one to us.
So I would make a motion to approve the Resolution 2023-25 with the change of the amount to $45,000 for fiscal year '23 and $50,000 for fiscal year '24.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Item H, deliberate an act on public celebration permits for Schuler Theater events. We have Colfax Ale Cellar June 10th and 11th, and Blue Dragonfly Brewing, June 18th and 19th. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is an application that you're looking at that would go to New Mexico Regulation and Licensing Department. It does require consideration by the local elected body. As you stated, we have, we will cover two vendors on two dates. I think the name of the event is always Patsy Cline on both dates, I believe. So, I will try to answer any questions that you have about the events.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I will move to approve. Public celebration permits for the Schuler Theater events, June 11th, 10th, 11th, and June 18th and 19th.
I'll second it. A motion and a second to approve the celebration permits. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate an act on dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, we do maintain the regional dispatch center here at the City of Raton, and then that's efficient for the smaller agencies throughout the area. So, this is typically a thing we've talked about and renewed numerous times over the years. So, this would be renewal of an agreement that we have in place. I believe that the terms of the agreement remain unchanged. I would point out that under the consideration section of the agreement, the Town of Springer will pay the City of Raton a sum of $32,004 per year for the services provided for the City of Raton Communications Center. The agreement for a period not to exceed one year, starting with the effective date of the agreement. So, that's the basics of the agreement. It is something that we have routinely do with other agencies in the area.
Okay. Is there any significance in the $4? Just a matter of curiosity?
Don't know, Mayor. I'm not sure.
It's just an odd number, $32,004.
You know, typically, I think that there's an analysis done based on the call volume for various agencies. And so, it's divided into that, so. Not sure how we arrived with that number. Nice round number.
Good enough. Any other questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve the dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer.
A motion and a second to approve the dispatch agreement between Raton and the Town of Springer. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, public hearing, deliberate an act on ordinance number 1017, establishing formula for emergency water rates. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, several meetings back, we did introduce ordinance, proposed ordinance, number 1017. Mr. Sykes from Raton Water Works was here to talk about the current reading of the ordinance in regard to emergency water rates. And Mr. Sykes is back again to review that with you or answer any questions that you have. I think to really summarize that, Raton has not implemented water emergency for decades, and as a consequence, we really haven't looked at this section of the ordinance, and it's pretty antiquated. Those emergency rates would probably, if we did declare an emergency regarding water usage, would probably be less than regular rates today. Is that correct, Terry?
Significant, I think.
Right, so, it's something that we've all talked about in the past meeting. A couple of you have also deliberated this at the Water Board. Terry is available for discussion or for your questions.
Alright, any questions for Scott or Terry? I again remind everyone, this is a public hearing as well. I'm not seeing anyone wishing to address the commission at this time, so would entertain a motion.
Can we make it both ordinance 1017 and 1018 at one time? We've got to do them separate. Ordinances, you've got to do separate.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 1017.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1017, and Desiree will take a roll call vote on this one.
Sure, Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo? And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Ordinance passes, correct? Yes. Thank you. Alright, item K, public hearing, deliberate an act on ordinance number 1018, establishing rates for water and sewer use. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, similar to the previous item, we had previously introduced the proposed ordinance number 1018. We have let the public know this would be a public hearing, and the commission can take action on the proposed ordinance number 1018, establishing rates for water and sewer use. And I think previously when we talked about this, we did cite some inflationary costs that would have to deal with operation of the water utility. And that could be, that could really hit us, and of course, in every operation, the cost of fuel, that affects everything. The water treatment plant is a significant user of different chemicals that are used in the water treatment process. We've seen a big increase on that, generally some other issues as well. And we did say, we did state that we have the 3/4% GRT increment in place for some capital expenses on water. That generally would not cover any sewer. We might be able to apply that to reuse system type of capital improvement. But you do have the mix of user rates and GRT. But you can't use the GRT for these operational costs that are being impacted by inflation. So, I think there is a proposal that has been sent to you from the Water Board, again deliberated there, and I believe you have their recommendation for the rates. Terry, I don't know if you want to review the details on the rate proposal here, or if the commission would like to have that discussion. But that's kind of my broad overview of the ordinance.
Alright, any questions or comments for Mr. Sykes or Scott?
I just had one clarification. I think I got all my questions answered last time. The tap fees, do those go to affect July 1st as well, the new tap fees?
Correct.
Okay. And then the initial percentage starts July 22nd?
Like again, I will remind everyone again, this is a public hearing. Didn't get a great turnout here for this, so I'm assuming everyone is okay with their water rates going up. That's the question I usually get after a meeting like this, is why'd you guys raise the rates? You had your opportunity to come and address the commission, but yeah, they did. I'll be honest, I was going to argue against this, Terry, because I just didn't feel like we were needing to go up with our rates, you know, but after studying and looking at that, I think you're in line with everything else in that I've seen. And I have to admit, I overlooked the last page because I thought I didn't get the breakdown of how this was going to do. And then Michael Ann pointed out that we did have this in the packet, so my apologies there. But I think it's in line with what's happening throughout the country and throughout the state, so. And the Water Board has discussed it in depth, I'm sure, so I would feel good with their recommendation.
I felt the same way. I was, why are we doing this? But after having taken the time to process it all and read everything and had the justification, it makes sense.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number 1018, establishing rates for water and sewer use.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1018. Is there any further discussion? We have a roll call vote, please, Desiree?
Sure, Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Alrighty, thank you. Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it.
Before we go on, I'd like to address, since we're talking about the water department, I would like for us to keep a sharp eye with what's going on with this drought on our water thing. And I know you do a good job, but I think that we should be able to, if it requires that we're going to need to do some limiting on watering and stuff, I think that we should keep a sharp tack on this, I really do.
Absolutely, I would agree, especially with the way this fire is now progressing. It's something that we all need to be aware of and watch it. Alrighty. So, thank you. Item L, deliberate an act on budget adjustments, J-Jack Grant Number 21-2084-3 for fiscal year '22, Adjustment Number 3, and Resolution 2022-26, Budget Adjustment Number 12, Fiscal Year '22. Michael Ann?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. We bring to you this evening two separate budget adjustments, both related to our juvenile justice program. The first one is on the special template that's required by CYFD. We are proposing a line item adjustment for the restorative justice program to move some monies. When they do the restorative, they do the pre-work, the actual circle, and then the post-work. And so, for pre and post, they get $55 for each of those sessions, and then a circle is $165. So, we're trying to plan from now until the end of the fiscal year so that we can zero out the funds and not revert any monies for that specific program. So, this line item adjustment would be $1,320, moving it from the pre and post and into the circle. And I don't know if you want to take action on both of these together or separately. The other one is our typical Resolution 22-20, 22-26. This would be budget adjustment number 12. So, we do have some additional funding that the Raton Public Schools would be offering to the City of Raton, and this would be funding to provide additional girls' circle sessions for the month of May. These sessions are in addition to the actual HRDA program that's funded through the CYFD grant, and so the school would be offering to pay $1,980. And so, since HRDA is our subcontractor, the schools had just asked that I invoice them once the program ends in May, and then the schools will pay us. So, I'm looking to put a couple new line items into the budget to record the local revenue, and then we'll just call it a special program. I think the schools have maybe some additional monies that they received, possibly through the CARES Act, that might be able to enhance these programs. So, we may see either in this fiscal year or next, maybe some additional funding from the schools.
Alrighty, and I think since both of these adjustments are related to the same thing, we can adopt them both at once.
Yeah, and as far as the $1,320, our budget, we just lumped the restorative justice into one line item, so I don't have to make an adjustment to the city's budget on that. But the CYFD grant program does require us to fill out their special form to make that adjustment.
You ready?
Budget Adjustment 22, Adjustment 23, and.
A motion and a second to adopt both budget adjustments, number three for fiscal year 22, and fiscal year, number 12 fiscal year 22 for resolution 22-2022-26. That's a mouthful.
That was. You did good.
Terry, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item N, deliberate and act on fiscal year 22 audit services recommendation of award and authorization to contract with selected firm. Scott?
Mayor and Commissioner, you do have in your pocket a memorandum and a recommendation from Michael Ann Antinucci, the city clerk, regarding selection of an auditor. As we said, we had really timed out on our contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. There is a requirement that we change auditors after so many years, so you don't develop that familiarity where some things might, might slip by. And so we are changing auditors now. We did request proposals, we did get two proposals, as you see in the recommendation. As far as how the process goes, I'm going to turn it over to the city clerk to explain the, the recommendation and, and how this works as far as the requirements from the state auditor.
So as city manager Berry stated, we did solicit proposals. We received two that were both deemed responsive to our request. We have SJT Group LLC and Patio Brown &amp; Hill. We did have an audit selection committee consisting of city manager Berry, general manager Piancino, and also general, general manager Terry Sykes from Raton Water Works. So they did review and score the proposals. And upon their evaluation, the cumulative scores are provided. So SJT Group LLC received a cumulative score of 265 points, and Patio Brown, it was fairly close, 249 points. So the recommendation that we bring to you this evening would be to award this contract to SJT Group. The state auditor's office does require that we create a contract in there, it's called the OSA Connect Portal. And so upon your approval this evening, we do have until May 15th to get that contract uploaded. And then from there, the final contract would be issued by the state auditor's office, and then we would route it for signature between the two parties. We do anticipate scheduling some preliminary test work. As we've talked in the past, anytime you have a new audit firm, the first year is a little rough, but they will probably reach out to the past firm to get their work, work papers and as much information as possible. But yeah, that first year is a little tough. So we'll try to get some preliminary test work done once the contract is executed. And then we would probably look to schedule a week or two, generally September, October. The actual audit submission deadline is December 15th. So that's always the goal, is a timely audit.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Scott or Michael Ann? Or Terry? Terry was part of the team.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid award for, oh, the audit for SJT Group LLC.
A motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the SG, SJT firm for our new auditors. For any further discussion, all in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, public hearing and review of City of Raton fiscal year 23 interim budget. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the city clerk is taking the big task of drafting this interim budget. I guess it's actually the finance officer doing that, right? I'm not sure. But as we said, stated, this, you know, a little different, I think that there's some evolution going on with the City of Raton. We talked about those things extensively at the workshop. You know, it was a pretty long day, but I think it was a productive day at the budget workshop. It's not something that we would typically do, but because there's, there is a little bit of a, a change in how things are, what the requirements of city services are, and how we provide that, and the expense side and the revenue side, that, that was a very productive day for us in, in considering the budget. Michael Ann has worked on the draft budget extensively, and I think we want to give an update on where we're at in the process and then what we anticipate going forward. And I'm going to turn to Michael Ann for, for help on that update here now. And as we stated, we're trying to meet a deadline in submitting an interim budget. And then there's a, another requirement for the final budget as well, so.
All righty.
So Mayor and Commissioner, as you're all very familiar with the process for the budget, I think we're probably starting the process a little later this year than we typically, typically would. And so it's kind of crunch time. And as we discussed at the workshop a few weeks ago, we do have a lot to accomplish in a short period of time. But, you know, I'm kind of a firm believer, I don't like to just slop something together for the sake of presenting something to you unless I've really, you know, taken the adequate time to prepare it and, you know, double check it, triple check it. We did have a very productive work session. I appreciate the time that each department had put into their presentations. As we talked, it was very valuable to us because during a typical day or week, we don't get a lot of one-on-one time with our departments, and we all have really hectic schedules. So I found the workshop to be very valuable. And, you know, as the city manager said, we do have a big challenge ahead of us just to try to work the revenue projections and then also the expenses, but to also come up with a balanced budget. So I'm still entering some of the information, and I think that's the biggest challenge, is I, I typically try to enter everything that we talked about, and then when the, it doesn't balance, then I'm kind of having to go back and say, okay, you know, how are we going to prioritize everybody's needs? And, you know, all of the department's needs are important. And so it's kind of hard for the city manager and I to have to make some of those tough decisions and then bring those recommendations to you as well. So we do have a considerable amount of money that we talked about in the general fund reserve that we are looking to allocate towards some of those one-time purchases. We cannot use reserves for recurring expenses such as personnel. So I think that's where the bigger challenge comes in, is we have to make sure that our grocery receipts projections can support the recurring expenses that we're going to be proposing, including any new positions, as we discussed. So apologize, I don't, do not have a draft available for you this evening. I don't know if the Commission wants to consider having another brief workshop between now and the 24th, but if not, we do have the fixed asset inventory this week. It actually was scheduled back in March, and we had to reschedule it, and this was the only week they could come, so. So we will be working with the same company, RCI, and they'll be here through Fridays. So we're going to try to get through that, but I could probably have a draft budget early next week.
And that, what I was going to suggest perhaps, Michael Ann, is before now, in the next meeting, we do get together one evening next week and go, go over it, at least if we can see it.
Sure.
And before we adopt the, the interim. So I have no objections to doing something like that, if, if that's the wish of the Commission.
Yeah. I'm going to be out of town part of Wednesday through Friday, so.
Okay, so if we could do it Monday or Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday.
And I think the Water Board meets on Tuesday, correct? So I don't know if we'd want to do maybe like a 5:00?
They move, the Water Board meets early, they usually.
Oh, you meet early now?
Five.
Okay, at 5:00, so maybe after?
And it's usually done by 6:00.
We could do it after their meeting or earlier in the afternoon.
What's the wish of the Commission? I mean, 6:30 would work. I don't think that's too late to ask anybody if you want to do 6:30, or if you want to do something in the afternoon.
I'm okay with 6:30 on Tuesday night.
No, too. You're going to be here anyway, right? Yeah.
So we would advertise that as a, a special meeting. I guess if any other pressing business came up, we could certainly add that to the agenda, but it would probably be just more of a, a budget workshop. And it could be an additional public hearing if anybody from the public would like to, to join as well.
Yep. All righty, this is, like Michael Ann said, this is a public hearing and review and discussion. I think we're good until next Tuesday, then 6:30, we'll look forward to that.
Okay.
All righty, thank you for your work, Michael, I appreciate it. Item O, deliberate and act on City of Raton versus Racing at Raton LLP, complaint for breach of contract, declaratory judgment, unjust enrichment, ejection, and quiet title. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is something that we talked about at the last city commission meeting. You did hear from counsel on this item, and I bring this to you for your consideration tonight. The complaint has been finalized by counsel for the City of Raton. As you say, this is related to the real estate that was offered to horse racing at Raton back in the 2008 time period in order to try to bring a racetrack license to Raton. There was an agreement drafted at the time, and the responsibility of horse racing at Raton would have been to obtain the, the horse racing license, construct and operate a horse racing track and casino. That has not happened. We do not anticipate that is going to happen. We have asked, as it's stated in the agreement, for the return of title to the property, and racing at Raton has really not answered our request. And so I do bring this complaint to the Commission for your consideration. You would have the option here to take action, to move forward with the complaint. If you do choose to move forward with the complaint, upon your affirmative vote, we would submit this to district court and take proceedings to resolve the dispute in court with the intent of recovery of the, the real estate to the City of Raton.
All right, thank you. Yeah, this has been thorn in our sides for a while.
It has.
And I think it's time we, we do take some action. And my, my feeling anyway is that we do take some action and try to get that property back. You know, it is clearly a breach of contract. Track didn't happen, the casino didn't happen for reasons, whether or not they were.
Substantial.
Substantial, or substantiated or what, by your claimant. It wasn't done, and, and it's not going to happen. So that's just my opinion, and open it up to the Commission for.
I agree with you, Phil. I think that we need to deliberate and act and send it forward, I really do. It's time, it's been, it's been a thorn in our side, like you said.
Yeah.
I think we understand it wasn't necessarily their fault that it didn't happen, but it didn't.
It didn't happen, yeah. I would entertain a motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion to proceed on the City of Raton versus Racing at Raton LLP, complaint for breach of contract, declaratory judgment, unjust enrichment, ejection, and quiet title.
A motion and a second to proceed with the, the filing. Desiree, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
All right, thank you. You got your orders there, Mr. Berry.
We'll go forward, Mayor.
All righty. Item P, Mr. Chavez's favorite part of the meeting, city manager report.
Oh, boy.
Thank you, Mayor. You did mention the, we have talked about a couple of times, the CAF Canyon Hermits Peak Fire. We've kept a close eye on that, and today we did hear that the Black Lake area, there are actually a couple of areas named in the Black Lake area on, on set status. And there is the possibility that through the week, the, the fire could enter Colfax County. So that, that's one possibility. We don't know for sure what happens. The winds are variable and they're unpredictable, but the, the fire entering Colfax County is a possibility. Additionally, Angel Fire, the area of Angel Fire, has been placed on ready status. And so that's, we hope that that does not happen. But we have had a very difficult couple of days on the fire in which the sustained winds have, have really prevented aircraft from operating. What's unusual is the, the winds have really not subsided at, at night or during the dark. They have been sustained for several days. That makes really checking the fire challenging. The team, the incident team working this has really worked to protect some of the, some of the, the structures, houses, and assets that are there in Mora County. And just the status of the fire, it's over 200,000 acres currently. It's one of the biggest fires, if not the biggest fire in history of New Mexico. Started in San Miguel County, has, has really burned extensively in Mora County, is threatening Colfax County. And there are two fronts I think the team is really looking at. So one would be on that north end, and the prediction, I haven't seen the, the latest, but that it would move towards Guadalupe today along a high elevation ridge where there's not any, any work put in place. So it basically blew over the work in the Cleveland area that, that the team has been working on. And with these type of winds, an ember can carry for a long distance. As a matter of fact, this morning, one of the, one of the commanders on the fire, they had a documented case of embers carrying over two miles. And then you have a new start. And so what we're seeing is several new starts that, that are just that, embers carried by wind combining on this, on this high elevation ridge, and it's, it's set up to, to run. Prevailing winds are generally out of the south or southwest. So there, that, that's the thing that we're keeping our eye on. Humidities have been very low. The recovery humidity, that's generally at, after the sun goes down, you see this, this recovery have been very poor over the last several days. And, and conditions have been red flag conditions, generally all around tough for containing this. There is another front that's really at the Santa Fe National Forest, more of the, the west flank of this, that's also very threatening. It's in very rugged terrain, tough to, tough to work on. And this thing is just a big monster. And so there is some containment in place, mostly on the, on the eastern front of this. I, I think they feel a little more comfortable in the Las Vegas area, although there's a lot of smoke up there, and you never say for sure that anything is safe. But that, this piece that's running north in the Guadalupe area, and then that, that front on the Santa Fe Forest to the west, that's really dividing the attention of the team. There are over 1,700 firefighters on this. I think we have a, a lot of the available resources on this. So they're doing everything that they can do. I think it's a, a really highly, highly qualified team. It really looks like something we saw in the Cooks Peak Fire. It's more, it's similar to two separate events is where this thing is going. So we, we do understand that they may consider creating a, a different team for those two, those two areas. And we'll see what happens tomorrow and the next day. I think a little better news, the wind is, is looking at subsiding somewhat. Humidities are forecast to come up somewhat. No precipitation though, or very low chance of precipitation, so it's still tough conditions. And so we will keep our eye on it. We'll, we try to get the word out there. Raton is, is participating with other Colfax County agencies as far as, as preparations that we would make in the Angel Fire and, and Black Lake area, so that's going on. We're, we'll, we'll do what preparations that we can, and we'll deal with this, you know, as we, as we need to. And I'll keep you posted on that.
Yeah, as you were stating, I, I drove to Santa Fe today and back, and it, it definitely looks like two separate events now.
Yep.
You've got the south end and then that north end, and like today, Vegas was clear.
Right.
Absolutely clear. I mean, it was better air quality than we've got here. So, and to your point about the embers, you had all the main smoke behind Romeroville and all of that, but on a peak out there all by itself was another separate column just going up, so.
So, I understand that another type-one team will be mobilized. Expect to hear that tomorrow. So, we'll keep an eye on this, definitely.
There was fire traffic up and down the interstate there between Wagon Bound and Santa Fe.
Right, right. Not the only fire, not the only fire in New Mexico, but they are placing a lot of resources on this fire. As they should, over two hundred thousand acres has burned. And so, we unfortunately have become experienced with the wildfire and how that goes and what you do after that. And I think we do have some experienced people here locally. I have a lot of trust in the incident team that's managing this, and we'll, can't control the weather, so we'll see what comes. Keep you posted. We'll be talking about that. I did attend a conference at Vermeil Park Ranch today. The conference is extending tomorrow. It is the Western Land Owners Alliance. I was invited to attend and give a presentation on the role of government in private and working lands. And what we talked about generally, there were a lot of questions. What do you think about Vermeil Park in the City of Raton? And, you know, what we talked about was, well, there's a lot of employment that's really generated some good jobs if we consider the coalbed methane operations and then the wood products that really stem from Vermeil Park. So, they're a great partner. But this was a conference of people from all over the country. I met people from as far as Montana and South Carolina, came to Raton to attend this conference, came to Vermeil Park. So, I was, I really welcomed the chance to attend and address the conference. And so, I plan on attending in the morning. Then, on Thursday and Friday, I do plan to attend the Rural Infrastructure Conference. That's scheduled in Santa Fe. It's to be held at the Roundhouse. I think it's, it has been scheduled because our question to our state delegation is, how come all the resources seem to go in the Rio Grande Valley and the rural communities get, you know, kind of the short end of the stick? And so, I think we want to go down and make our thoughts, knowing that we'd like to see a little more equitable distribution of resources in New Mexico that, you know, put as much emphasis on the rural communities as it does the Rio Grande border. So, that's the plan. We will keep an eye on the emergency events going on, but I do plan to be on that. Just an update on construction projects that are ongoing. We do have, we have active construction on the Railroad Depot parking lot area improvements. That's paving and drainage improvements, so we've been pouring concrete this week. I would let everyone know that we do have downtown street improvements going on as well. That's a project that we partially completed in the fall of twenty-one. Took a winter shutdown, and we're trying to finish that project up. The part that is left is challenging because it's milling old, really old concrete pavement, and then we plan place a paving fabric and asphalt overlay over the old concrete. So, milling concrete is challenging. They're working on Clark Avenue today. We'll also do a milling of concrete pavement on Third Street as well. So, that's in the vicinity of the post office. Would caution the public that we'll be doing that the rest of this week, and I would say into next week. Then try to place this fabric and then try to get some hot mix on that. So, that's definitely going to impact traffic in the area. Please try to understand and work around that if we can. The greenhouse construction is well underway. Talking about the supply chain issues, we're waiting for some panels, which are polycarbonate disruption, to come in to finish up that project, but really happy with the progress on the greenhouse. So, those are going on. Electrical improvements at the armory that we talked about, those are ongoing. There's some supply chain issues there as well. We are close to completing the upgrade of the lighting system at the Raton Visitor Center and some other improvements at the Raton Visitor Center. So, there's a lot going on out in the field right now, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Barry. Any other comments? Commissioner Chatterley?
I have a couple of short comments. One was, I was thinking about that fireworks resolution, and it said a hundred and sixty thousand acres it burned. And I did some math this afternoon, and since then, it's doubled just since writing that resolution, which I thought was interesting. We're at over three hundred and twenty after today. So, I think that puts everything into perspective how quickly things are changing.
Yep.
The only other thing is, next week, when I'm out of town, I'll be attending the Outdoor Industry Economic Development Summit in Colorado. So, I'm taking that brings back some good information. I've attended that previously in New Mexico, so I'm curious to see, because they have some bigger speakers and things there since their partners have been around a lot longer. That should be good.
Cool. Commissioner Giacomo? Commissioner Chavez? Mayor Protem? We're still, the fire is still the second largest. I've heard today the largest was three hundred and one thousand, three hundred and two thousand. Can't remember the name now.
But not currently happening.
Not currently happening, no.
It's the largest in the nation currently.
Yeah, but in state history, this is still the second largest.
We hope we don't get there.
We hope we don't break our record, yes.
Yes, it's not a good thing to break our record.
That's right. Seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
Good job, guys. All you.
You too, Mr. Chavez.